Okay. I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of Glendale City Council and the Glendale Economic Development Corporation for August the 2nd. Roll call, please.
Roll call for council. Council members Friedman.
Here.
Garpadian.
Here.
Ajarian.
Here.
Senanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item?
Agenda for the August 2nd, 2016, joint public meeting of the City Council and Economic Development Corporation was posted on Friday, July 29, 2016, on the bulletin outside city homes. Sorry to interrupt your community development regarding Montrose Vision 2020. City Council motion to note and file.
Mr. Ochoa, 2020.
Yes, just very quickly, going back a couple of years, City Council had directed, as one of your department's strategic goals, to that the economic development staff collaborate with Montrose stakeholders to come up with what amounts to a strategic plan, setting a vision, a guiding document for the Montrose Shopping Park area. One of our newest additions to the team, our principal economic development officer, Jennifer McLean, helped spearhead that effort. She has a rather brief presentation for you this afternoon, and certainly there are representatives from MSPA here to address the council. Ben?
Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. It gives me great pleasure to present to you this Montrose Vision 2020 Plan. As Mr. Ochoa mentioned, this has been something in the making of about, I believe, just over a year, and it's something that we believe is truly a collective vision of the stakeholders that have been involved. Before you is the Montrose Vision 2020 document, and again, it is a draft, and this is a note and file report, so we're happy to hear at the conclusion if there's any comments as well. Just for a little bit of background, back in 2011, the City Council did adopt the North Glendale Community Plan, and this is really a very important planning document. But one of the things that we continued to hear is that we still needed, we needed something to address a key element, which was how do we attract more visitors and residents, excuse me, more visitors and shoppers to Montrose? And this is really what we're hoping to address in this, in this vision plan. So at the core of it, we're hoping the vision articulates an economic development strategy built from the collective ideas from all of the stakeholders involved to improve elements of Montrose using tools available from the city. Just to go back through the process briefly, so this goes back to February 2015. We started with a series of meetings, one-on-ones, meetings with the Chamber, MSPA, the residents, the businesses. We issued a survey, and we'll see some of the findings, but we got about 500 survey responses back, which is exceptional. We also did a field trip out to a good idea of some other best practices, and in some cases, we even learned, hey, you know what? We're doing great in Montrose, and that's always a wonderful thing to hear as well. We also presented the draft vision back to the stakeholders that were involved in this, and here we are today. I mentioned the survey, just a brief sampling so that you can see. In total, we had the 520 folks that responded, and you can see about 440 of those were from the residents and visitors, and the remainder were either business owners, property owners, or a combination of both. And on the right-hand side, you can see that about two-thirds of these folks have been to Montrose about seven times, at least seven times in one month. So these are folks that are very, very aware of what's happening in their surroundings. Surveys are always so interesting because you can see the answers to the questions that you're directly asking, but you also start to see themes emerge. And one of the themes that started to emerge is the word "love." Love was written in the comments about 30 times throughout the survey, and we all understand that, too. Folks have a deep-rooted passion and connection to Montrose. People have grown up there, they went to school there, perhaps their family started a business there, now they run that business. And you can see this, this connection, this love that people have. Just some of the comments up there, you can see, "I love Montrose, it's a great place to go with family or friends," or "I love Montrose, the quaintness, lights on trees, selection of restaurants, banks." I guess they really love their bank up there. And we, as a family, love Montrose, and I think that really captures the essence of what we hear, feel, and experience in Montrose as well. We also did, just so you get a little bit of background, too, of some of the responses back, what makes Montrose most special? At the top there, you can see the responses from the business and property owners, and you can see how it shakes out. A lot of folks, they think it's special because it's family-oriented. When you compare that below, you can see how it compares with the visitors. Where safe, quaintness, charming, family-oriented, that's what they think is really most special about Montrose. On the flip side, you start seeing, well, what's least special about Montrose? And what you can see is that trendy and nightlife are both two, two words that are not really synonymous with what folks think are making Montrose very special. So when we see that, we identify that as, well, that might be an opportunity as we're developing this vision. Just another thing to highlight, too, we asked folks, well, what do you think would enhance Montrose's character and ambiance? And you can start seeing that there are some parallels. Up in the top, you have public music, events, and street entertainment, followed by special events. Now, some of the other items that are listed there, those are more, those were specific recommendations that folks had. A wine walk was one of the ones that came up a number of times, and then public art.
Can you go back? I didn't understand the question you asked them. You said, what's the least special? What was the actual wording of that question?
Yes, ma'am. So the actual question of it was, what do you think makes Montrose most special?
I asked about the least special.
Right.
What is the actual wording you asked? That's the question?
This is actually the question of it, is what do you think makes Montrose most special? But what we pulled from that was just looking at what were the, the items that were on the very, that scored the lowest on those.
Well, but I still don't understand the question. I don't understand whether they're saying that it's not trendy, and that's what makes it special, or whether they want it to be more special, more trendy, because that would be more special. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Or that trendy makes it unspecial?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, I mean, I would, I go to Montrose a lot, I don't really consider it to be trendy, but I don't necessarily want it to be trendy either, and I can't tell from the way you asked the question whether these people are hungering for a more trendy experience, or they're saying it's not trendy, but it's still special.
Right, I completely understand. So with this, we were trying to parse out to see whether there is something on the, within the bottom, the bottom responses to identify opportunities, but to, to your specific point, later in the, in the surveys, we'll get to some highlights that folks actually do call out specifically that they would like to see more nightlife.
And with the nightlife, for instance, anybody who said that it's special because it's family-oriented are probably not the people who are saying, and bring, bring us a lot of nightlife, but I don't know.
You're absolutely right, and that, that's the interesting thing about anytime you do a survey. In some cases, even getting back to the, the comment on love, change is another comment that we heard quite a bit. Almost in the same breath, you, we would see some of these comments where people would write, "I love Montrose, don't change anything, but that parking lot back there actually needs a little improvement."
And then when you ask, I mean, do you describe what nightlife means? Because nightlife can be a bar, or nightlife can be a Disney movie at 7:00, so...
So with that, and that's something that we will get into later in some of the recommendations, but that's also a very good point, because we wanted to, again, strike that balance. We don't want this turning into a downtown Austin where, where there's bars 24/7.
I'm not asking about what we want, I'm asking about the way you asked the question. I'm just asking about the data and what your respondents thought they were answering, that's all.
Again, just, the idea is, we're asking, it's a positive question. Nobody asked what don't you like. People were only asked, what do you like? And these items represent the things on the bottom of that list.
Least.
Bottom of the list. So no one ever asked, what don't you think you like about Montrose? So it was, what do you like best about Montrose? Had all these things, and these were the ones that scored the least.
But you didn't ask best, you asked about what was special.
What was special, but that's, that's...
Was that like a multiple choice?
Go back to the...
Is that a multiple choice question? I mean, or did you have a list, and then they just checked off? Is that how you did this?
It was a ranking for this question, that's right.
Ranking. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So moving right along here, we also asked the question, what would further strengthen Montrose's future? And again, you can see on the left-hand side, the business and property owners believe that improvements to infrastructure is the number one, I think that would further strengthen the future, followed by ensuring a mix of restaurant and businesses, telling more people about Montrose, and then enhancing its nightlife. But on the right-hand side, you could see what the residents and visitors address, and you can see, as Councilmember Friedman was suggesting, that, that not all folks believe that it's always the same thing and have the same priorities. Again, we asked, what do you, what other things do you think that would make Montrose even better? Always interesting to see some of the consistencies is here, here as well. Lots of different types of shops and restaurants, followed by later store hours, and that's one of the things that was ultimately addressed when we also started talking about nightlife. Folks would like to see businesses open later, and you can see how it pans out further down. So ultimately, and I won't ask you to strain your eyes there as we'll get into each of those individual points, but we started to see, again, these fell into certain categories within placemaking, marketing, infrastructure, and relationships, and that's ultimately how the vision plan is written. So on the area of placemaking, this is really getting to how a place makes you feel, how does it appeal to your five senses? And for this, we can suggest heart as well. How does it appeal to your heart? So really, this is getting to the core of attract new diners, shoppers, and visitors to Montrose while enhancing the experience for returning visitors through business attraction, improving the nighttime experience, and building upon sense of place through art. And the, within your vision, it gets into the specifics of what some of these specific tools are, but on, one of the goals is striking that delicate balance of ensuring a mix of restaurants and businesses. That delicate balance can be difficult, because as we see, it can be subjective. Finding that right type of retail or right type of business might be different from one stakeholder group to another. So it's something that we will continually have to, have to balance. And one of the, the items as a possible tool here is really to build relationships with property owners to better understand what some of the vacancies are coming online, so that within economic development, for example, we can work to fill those.
But Jennifer, would that task force that they're suggesting help with that?
Yes, ma'am. So the mayor is referring to the letter that MSPA, the Montrose Shopping Park Association sent, in which they called for this, the property owners' task force, and that is, would exactly address that.
Okay, thank you.
The other item is getting to attract customers to Montrose 18 hours a day by enhancing the nighttime experience. And some of the things that we're talking about here are, again, taken from surveyor comments as well, things like doing more wine walks or jazz music festival, perhaps developing ways to encourage store hours to open their doors later. And that's something where the city may not have a direct stake in that game. That might be something where the other stakeholders groups might have a better way of encouraging that to happen. And you can see some of the other items listed in the vision. A third element is emphasizing a unique sense of place through art. This is something that we have a unique opportunity right now, given that the Public Art Master Plan is underway. There might be a really great opportunity for synergy to get some public art within Montrose as well. So that, that's really it for the, on the placemaking. Now, within marketing, I, I'm not sure, I'm sure you can relate, but anytime I find out about what I want to do on the weekend, I usually find out via social media, word of mouth. Facebook continues to tell me what I should do, and I usually follow that direction. So to that end, I think telling the story to residents, or even to regional visitors and tourists about all the wonderful opportunities in Montrose is really a priority here. So ultimately, we'd like to attract more visitors by promoting and marketing Montrose as a regional destination, by updating some of the current marketing strategies, and through increased partnership of all Montrose stakeholders. And within this area, we do have stakeholders that are really committed to doing this. It's at the core of what their function is. One of the recommendations that came out of this was simply updating its current branding, perhaps taking a look at its logo, or, or even considering whether we should rename Montrose Shopping Park to something it was suggested as Montrose Village. Does a name in itself have something to do in attracting more visitors? The other goal is through marketing, again, attract a steady stream of new visitors, particularly millennial shoppers and diners. And this is something that was called out directly, especially by those folks that responded in the survey. One of the recommendations in this, for example, is a possible tool, is continue to push the hashtag #Montrose campaign, which is something that the Montrose Shopping Park Association is leading right now. So these are really the two main goals within marketing. Just moving along to infrastructure, and this is something that really, when we, when we look at the infrastructure needs here, it's interesting to see how, again, the surveyors responded, and you can see that there's consistency here. Maintenance and repairs, so these are things like trash cans, for example, is, was ranked as one of the highest needs within infrastructure, followed by landscaping and improved parking lots. And you can see how the, the others are addressed. So what we did with this information was, again, tried to zero in on some of the, the priorities and what we want to see over the next five years. So the vision here is, again, focused on attracting customers, enhancing experiences. So enhance customers' experience in Montrose Shopping Park through a commitment to maintaining and improving public infrastructure, including parking, landscaping, and public furniture. One of the first goals here is really understanding what the capital improvement priorities are. If you take an example of when you have a home, you may have that kitchen remodel that you have been looking at for five years, and the time has finally come that you are going to finally be able to upgrade it. But then something happens, you find out that you have a roof that's leaking, and you need to address that first before you get to your kitchen remodel. That's something really, same is true with Montrose. There are going to be things that pop up, and it will be a collection from the stakeholders to really understand what some of those priorities are, and I think a first recommendation is really just to develop a prioritized list with those stakeholders. The second goal is to enhance the physical appearance, safety, and usability of parking. There has been a number of dialogue with the stakeholders that the parking is, is of the utmost priority, but that's also, could be a significant dollar associated with those improvements. So as one of the recommendations here as a possible tool, it would be just simply to develop a parking advisory committee to do a parking lot study that would identify the true needs here. As a third goal, there was a lot of comment from surveyors about the aesthetics of the trees and landscaping, especially in light of some of the drought-tolerant landscaping that we, that we placed within Montrose. So really, just a commitment to improving the aesthetics of landscaping elements. And again, the details of tools are within your vision document. And then finally, maintaining an environment of associated infrastructure, such as public furniture, electrical outlets, trash cans, and dog facilities, number of comments on doggy-related facilities, for the safe use of public space by pedestrians and vehicle traffic. And finally, this is something that wasn't outwardly addressed within the survey, but it's something that we, we picked up on during different conversations with folks. It's on the topic of relationships. So I think that there's, there's a great potential to have a huge impact when you collaborate, and this is really create an environment that encourages collaboration and partnership for the betterment of Montrose and Glendale as a whole. And within that, there are two goals associated with it. It would be to proactively educate all stakeholders about the community and economic development tools that are available, and then secondly, to continue collaboration between all stakeholders within Montrose and Glendale and seek out new partners. Small example of this, for example, is Glendale Chamber. They just had a very nice mixer up in Montrose, and that's something that Montrose should continue to look as a possible collaborator as well. So with that said, we, I know that Montrose Shopping Park is here as well, and they wrote a letter, and I'm sure that they have additional comments, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I will conclude with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I have one card. Thank you. We'll, I think we'll get to the questions after we hear, we just have one. So Ken Grayson? And Steve Pierce?
Good evening. I'm Ken Grayson, and I'm treasurer for the Montrose Shopping Park Association. I, of course, you know that we are a business district, and we tax ourselves to run promotions and do quite a few things other than major cost items such as infrastructure, and that's where I'm here today. I mean, I noticed on the agenda, today's message was to, to note and file. We've been talking about parking for over 25 years. I've been at, my business was established in Montrose in 1953. I myself have been very active for 35 years. I have a pretty good idea of what Montrose needs from all my years. But, you know, the, the main thing is, some of these things cannot be buried and just, you know, they need to be done soon, because here's what we've done. We need more parking, but we realize, of course, that that is a major cost factor. But we need appearance change. We really need a makeover. We spent, in the last few years, several hundred thousand dollars in promoting for the 200 businesses that are members of the Montrose Shopping Park. We feel that we have hired a organization to do social media for us. If you look at what Montrose Shopping Park has done as a promotional body, we are better than most areas, and that was even confirmed when we made these tours to three other cities. The problems are very similar, but we don't have a lot of vacancies. People like opening businesses in Montrose. Insofar as nighttime activity, that's something we need to even do better, but if you come to our evenings in Montrose, you will find that virtually every parking lot is full. So we are doing some evening, evening activity. One of the major things, this is not even in my notes, one of the major things that we, we find difficulty, some of the older merchants in town that are single merchant-run, is very difficult for them to consider later hours, but that's the direction we have to go if we're going to survive. And we have to create an environment that is attractive to our customers, and that's why we need a makeover. We are competing, as every other location in the country, against online business. And still, small business is the, is the foundation for this country, and it needs to be looked at seriously if it's going to continue to be. And that, you know, we are striving to figure out more and more ways to keep people out of their homes, to come in and enjoy the experience. And that's where we can compete against online. They can't do that. But we have to look like, you know, a, a district that is worthy of having repeat customers, and that's where we really, I wanted to make sure that you realize tonight that it is very imperative that our improvement on our infrastructure is given consideration. I can show you where to spend that $640,000. But as an interim thing, we need all our lots blacktop and restriped. They have been repaired, they have been filled with whatever, you know? I'm not suggesting we just redo it, but that needs to improve our appearance. Insofar as our landscaping, it is, even before the drought, the amount of attention that was given to our landscaping by the company that you employ to, to do what they do in Montrose is so minimal.
Ken, your time is up, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
Time, time is up. Can you wind it down, finish?
Okay. We need more color, we need more variety, we'd love to have some of our grass back. That is something that everybody talks about in town, and those are important things. I, I don't know, you know, the blacktopping immediately and, you know, and landscaping is where I feel the greatest thing is, to help us continue to entertain people and bring them to town, you know?
Thank you.
That is incredible. The other thing is, we need a, we need an older...
Ken, your time is, really, your time is up.
Sorry.
Really, thank you.
Should I fill out two cards?
I think we have, I think we have the mess, we got the mess.
We need a long-range plan for a, a multi-deck parking facility, and I have some ideas there that I'd be happy to share.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Comments and questions from council?
I, everything that I hear from our Montrose Shopping Park, nothing sounds unreasonable, nothing sounds like it's so much to ask that we can't afford it, so let's make an effort and make sure that these concerns that are raised are addressed. Long-range plan for how we're going to address parking. I'm not saying that we haven't been thinking about it, let's just, I guess, give it a little more attention.
This plan is the first step in that direction.
Okay, great. And the striping, I mean, I can't imagine how much that, that's going to cost. Let's, let's do that. I keep hearing about the trash cans, I think, I, you know, a couple of years ago...
I think there's...
So they've been replaced.
We will maintain them our session.
Good, so the one thing you're happy with, okay, that's great. Otherwise, it's, Montrose, I love Montrose, everyone loves Montrose. It's, you know, I want to get away from Glendale and still be in Glendale, you go to Montrose, and it's fun, it's great, it's a family place, it's a warm, warm place, so let's make our jewel even better.
Okay. Mr. Garpadian?
I think one of the things we need to look at is connect downtown Glendale to Montrose. So if people want to come from downtown Glendale to Montrose, there is a trolley or a transportation, public transportation system, so Montrose will get more, more people to visit Montrose. So I think that's very important, and they will become, if you come once, you get hooked, you become repeat customers. Montrose had that, that attraction. As far as landscaping goes, believe me, I voiced my opinion about taking the grass out. I was really upset about taking any grass out from anywhere. I know the drought is there, we rolled back to the second phase. I don't know what our, one thing that we need to look at is our irrigation system in Montrose, I don't know if we took it all out, or they're still there. It, there's...
There's still so much...
Right, right. We can't have this back and forth, I'm sorry, we can't have back-and-forth conversation, but I think we need to look at that, and the grass areas were not that, they're patches, they're not that big of an area, so you can add some colors to it, you can add the grass to it. There was some new designs that we've done, I looked at it yesterday, believe me, it's, it's falling apart even now. So I don't think we should follow, you know, continue what we did, we need to look at it differently. The outdoor seating areas for some of the restaurants, they become very expensive, because there was a restaurant, I think they closed down, if I'm not mistaken, or a bakery, they had eight, they were allowed for eight, eight seats, and they wanted to add maybe two or four, and they were asked for $5,000 per seat, that's what I was getting at, I'm like, we have to look at those, those, to be a little bit more, more friendly in that aspect. As far as property owners, we need to get the, the real estate community involved, because the property owners, they list their properties, and the agents go out and get the, the only tenant that will pay the most. So if you have a collaboration between Montrose Shopping Park, the city, and the real estate community, so they will know what your vision is, what is it that you want, and what is it that is needed over there, so they can feed off of each other, businesses can feed off of each other, that would be better. Also, I know street cleaning, pressure washing, or cleaning the streets were an issue before, was an issue before. I don't know where we are with pressure washing the...
Mr. Grayson, please, there's no inner talking.
Okay. The trash pickup, you know, I think the city had done a great job in taking care of that, all the trash cans that were in the alley behind the 7-Eleven, I don't know the lot number over there, they were all cleaned up, they have a centralized trash cans, and they did a great job. As far as nightlife, you have to make sure it's a family-friendly nightlife. So if you go to Montrose at night, a lot of families walking around with their children. So we want to maintain that and, and even add to that, so the families will enjoy a very nice and quiet, but yet very family-friendly nightlife. I think that's what we need to look at, not only for Montrose, also in downtown Glendale as well. That's, that's very important. Again, landscaping is very, very, very crucial. We need to look into maybe putting some of the grass back. That's, that's, I will, I will fight for that every day. Also, Christmas lighting, lights, I don't know if it's going to stay, if it's going to go, how long can we keep it on? And I think it gives it a different, different feel and different cozy, cozy atmosphere. Pressure washing, I talked about connecting downtowns and parking. Look, every time I come to Montrose, I can find a parking spot, let me put it that way. Downtown Glendale, I have more, more, more issues, but, because there's more people here, but I can find a spot, but I don't know if we need to build more structures or not, but we'll look into that as well. I think that's another thing to look into, maybe a multi, multi-floor parking structures if the, the shopping park... if the, the shopping park is in the same page, to, to have a parking structure there. And that's what I have.
Mr. Njarian, councilman?
Just a couple thoughts. First, I do like the name of Montrose Village. I think it sort of expands the idea. You're a shopping park, you're not really sure what that entails if you've never been there before. I'm surprised to see that there weren't a lot of people asking for bike, bicycle amenities. Did I miss that, or that was just not high on the list?
Number two.
Was it on the list?
There, there was a survey question to it, let me just find my notes here, but it was not as high as some of the other items on the infrastructure needs.
Okay. I mean, there's bicyclists and there's bicyclists. I know there's a lot of the spandex type of bicyclists. I'm not sure what, you know, what you call those folks, as opposed to the families with the kids from the neighborhood just biking around.
Actually, I'm sorry, I did find this slide here, so it does speak to bike racks and-
Okay. Okay, so that's-
So, it's up there, it's higher than the clear parking signs.
Okay. The other comment is, how did the farmer's market rate? Was that something specifically anyone mentioned, or?
Specifically, well, there were, there are many comments in there, just woven in, about folks love the farmer's market. They, they see it as just a, an expected amenity now that is offered every Sunday. I didn't hear any, I didn't read any negative comments at all about the farmer's market.
How about the businesses? Are businesses adversely affected from the market?
Again, I didn't read that within the surveys, on some of the one-on-ones and comments during the different meetings, we've heard comments just related to the, there just needs to be a general awareness of the vendors, particularly food vendors, that are at the farmer's market so that they're not competing with the brick-and-mortar restaurants that are there as well.
Steve Pierce is here, maybe he can answer to that, just in general, about the business owners?
The question is, how is, how well is the farmer's market received by the businesses?
It's actually received quite well. We make a specific intent to talk to the businesses that feel like they may be impacted. For example, Seasoning Alley Restaurant had some complaints because chicken was being cooked inside by one of our vendors, so we opened up the space between those vendors so that people could actually see the Seasoning Alley Restaurant as they were walking down. So we actually make an attempt to address all those issues, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of that.
Okay. And it's a funding source?
Funding source, as far as our revenues. Our revenues are up. We've been affected by the weather this year, so it's been a little bit hot, and that affects some of our kids' activities. But we usually get 2,000 to 3,000 people there every week.
Good.
So it's been a good market for us.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
So I used to go to Montrose a lot to Tom's Toys when my kids were young. Now, more often than not, I'm going to one of the several sushi restaurants that you have there, which are very nice. Don't be afraid of a national chain. I know there was this big issue with Starbucks coming in, and I don't think that that's in any way detracted from the quaintness of Montrose. If anything, it's brought more people in, and, you know, having the coffee bean across the street, I think they're both doing successful business, and, you know, you, maybe you can't have enough coffee shops in Montrose. But just my thoughts, you guys live it every day, but just from, from a outsider, I think that's fine. Don't be afraid of national chains if they're going to bring in customers, so.
We're, we're trying to keep our quaintness. We obviously understand that the future may be with national chains, and so we have to take a look at that. I think one of the things that Jennifer mentioned is really important, we need to have a collaboration between the city and our landowners, and our property owners, I mean, and the shopping park. Right now, we're the last flea on the dog's tail to find out what's coming into Montrose, and we need to put an end to that, so we're hoping that the city can help us with that.
And what's going in where Rocky Cola used to be? Is there anything-
Good question. Well, the owner, Jeff Williams, who is leasing that property, is pretty tight-lipped about it. I don't know-
I think a Bob's Big Boy would be great there.
I would love to see a Bob's Big Boy.
I mean, that type especially brings in a lot of the family.
Absolutely.
Late night, you've got the sports teams there for fries and cokes, and, you know, teens take their dates there.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's, it's that really corner that everyone sees, that-
It would be a perfect fit, and we would love to see that happen. I think the city actually tried to reach out to Mr. Williams, and I'm not sure if they were successful. I know Jeff is very friendly with me, and as soon as we start talking about Rocky Cola, it's, Steve, I have things to do. So it's that type of situation. But we, we could use some help there if the city can help us out.
Okay, we'll keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you so much.
Steve and Mr. Grayson.
Mr. Njarian? Okay, thank you. Thank you, thanks.
Glad to see this come forward, glad to see the participation and the collaboration with the city and the MSPA, and that will continue, and I think that the city manager's hearing a lot of desire on the part of the council to support moving forward and making sure that some of the recommendations are implemented. I'll just throw out things in no particular order. I agree that maybe renaming the MSPA or the Montrose Village is a great idea, to give more of a sense to people who don't know what they're actually going to be experiencing. To the same extent, I would suggest doing the same thing, as was mentioned about #Montrose, which, to me, as a shopper, is not really very drawing to me. I'd rather have something that tells me what kind of experience I'm going to have. I do think that the old-fashioned-ness is the charm, and the family-friendliness of it is a draw. I hear often from other parents that there's not enough to do in Glendale with kids, and Montrose is a great way to spend time. And I go there a lot on the farmer's market, so love it, it's great, you all do a wonderful job. I have never had trouble finding parking except on the biggest special events, you know, on the Christmas, on the Halloween. I don't think parking is your issue in terms of amount, not that I've experienced, and I go there all the time at all different times of day. I would love to see, though, landscaping and shade in the parking lots, I think that's what's going to, you know, make people happier about parking in those lots, if it's, that's a better experience. I do think the national chains is an issue, that, you know, you're right to be concerned. Starbucks is there, but it would have been much better to be an intelligentsia, to be a brand that would actually give people a reason to go there as opposed to just another Starbucks. You know, we had talked once about some of the ordinances, that they have an Old Town Pasadena. I don't know whether you explored that or adopted it, but the city can adopt ordinances that do things like restrict restaurants to being there only if they don't have a menu that's in more than 10 locations, or uniforms that are used in more than 10 locations. There are ways that you can craft ordinances to keep chains out, and if you're interested in that, and I think you should be, before you get a Carl's Jr., or you get something like that in the middle of Montrose and everyone freaks out, let's adopt those now, and let's look into those now. So, I've talked to the planners about that for years, I know I've talked to you guys, and maybe it's, if you're concerned about that, think about it. But I think having a property owner's task force to work with you so that everyone's on the same page about the vision, so that the property owners understand that that retail mix and restaurant mix is very important to their bottom line, and the bottom line of the businesses. And I'll say that I, as a shopper, agree with your customers. You know, it's interesting that it's different from the, the businesses, so look at what the customers are talking about, about that mix of the type of businesses you have. And I'll say this with, with love, that sometimes it feels like the retail choices are limited. And, you know, I get it with the restaurants, and I go there and I'm never disappointed with the variety of restaurants. I can always find a place I want to eat, not always the case sometimes with all of the, the shops. I love the variety, I love that you can go and buy, you know, pet toys at the pet store, and you can go to Toon Town and get musical instruments, but sometimes, like, you know, then the clothing choices and-
Corsets are available.
Things like that, or, corsets are available. But, you know, we could do better, I think, with some of the, the retail. Although I will say, Patty's Closet, one of my favorite stores in all of Los Angeles, so it's a treasure. And hope to have helped with the marketing, and, you know, I know that you all have many years of success going ahead, a special part of our city, so thanks.
I just want to make it known, I shop Montrose. Okay. Thank you, thank you all. First of all, I think, I thank staff and, and the Montrose Shopping Park Association for putting all this together. It's a very good report, and a lot of good suggestions from council. I think, right now, and I'm going to, I think an action plan is the next step, and I'd like to maybe see some sort of staff report on, there are three main categories here that they are really interested in. First is the, the infrastructure, the parkings, the parking lots. Number two is the upgrading the landscape, and number three is the formation of this property task force. I'd like to see a report, a staff report, on how soon we can have some of these implemented, the cost, and who will be the point person, so that we can begin to get these items, these points, short-term goals accomplished. To note and file is fine, but I think it's time now that we move to the next step and get a plan in place so that we can move towards upgrading that, those parking spaces, or that parking lot, et cetera. The parking advisory, did you say, Jennifer, this is for you, the parking advisory study, or did you say a committee of some sort?
I said both.
Okay.
I did, yes. So we would have, we would assemble a committee to ultimately develop a, a study that would address the needs at priority levels.
Okay, okay. I, I would assume, or I would think that probably the, the people that have the stores and the shops and the parking, in the shopping park kind of know what they need, but the parking structure is long-term, and, and that's, we're talking a lot of money. I think we should look at these short-term goals and try to get those accomplished. Jennifer, would you be the point person for this task? Or do we not?
I would be happy to be that point person.
Okay, because obviously they enjoyed working with you according to the, the letter that they wrote, so you've been doing a good job.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So that would be my suggestion, that we, that we take action, not just note and file, but take action, get a plan, find out the cost, how soon we can have it done, get some of these accomplished. And with that, I-
It's like a motion?
Motion and second?
No, I was, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to not file with the council.
Second, okay. We don't need a-
Move to adjourn?
Do we need a, a roll call? Oh, we do? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Njarian?
Yes.
Hare Devine?
Yes. Thank you. Do I, let's see, now, do I have a-
Motion to adjourn for council?
Motion to adjourn? Some moved.
Second.
Okay, moving on.
And for Board Economic Development Corporation?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.